Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 8th, and it is 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum, and I'm calling this meeting to order.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm trying to start my video, but it's saying that the host stopped it, and I'm not able to start my video.
Yeah, same, same here.
Same here. Oh, mine started.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Fryman, would you give us our opening statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As Secretary of the Bloomfield Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement. We review information and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of the Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to the reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings for the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for orders periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system, and thank you for the interest in the Bloomfield Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item four, Consent Agenda. Approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on May 11th. Mrs. Bolton?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 11th, 2021 regular Board meeting as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and second. Are there any edits or corrections that need to be made? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
The net's gonna die from lack of company. Okay. Those opposed? It is, uh, it is unanimously accepted. Thank you. Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents Awards. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, families, and our hearing audience joining us virtually. Over the last thirty years, we have participated in the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Awards Program. This annual awards program recognizes students in the middle and high school who exhibits exemplary leadership skills. In order to qualify for the Superintendent's Awards Program, students must demonstrate academic prowess, citizenship, and leadership while being active members of their community. These students are outstanding representatives of Bloomfield Public Schools and the community. We will begin the awards presentation by welcoming Mrs. Sarah Williams, Principal of Common and Erasing Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Board Chair, Mr. Harris, and community members watching and viewing audience. I am very proud, as you can see, two beautiful young ladies on our screen. I'll first read about Miss Nadine Glenville. This is written from her teacher, Mrs. Valorelli. "It has been an honor to be Nadine's sixth-grade teacher for the 2020-21 school year. From the moment that I met Nadine, I knew she was a special student. Nadine is the student that every teacher admires and is a role model for each of her peers. She has truly impressed me and the entire team of teachers with her gift of learning. She consistently challenges herself to achieve success beyond expectations. She's an exceptional math student with great number sense and reads beyond her years and shows creativity in all of her writing. Nadine has the inept ability to write and convey her thoughts and ideas throughout any writing assignment she's given. She always continues to impress. Nadine is an exemplar student in all aspects of her academic career. She's looked up as a role model in the classroom and supports her peers and in the classroom is willing to help them whenever possible. Nadine has outstanding work ethic striving for excellence in all that she does. She's quiet and humble, never flaunting her academic achievements. She's extremely well behaved and focuses each and every day. We are so proud of Nadine." Our next is Malia Slowly, and this is written by her teacher, Mr. Charbonneau. "Malia has a wonderful and reserved personality. She's always willing to help out, extend herself to try more difficult problems, and never has an attitude towards others. She's able to ignore what others are doing and always remembers to make the best choice in various situations. She is very aware of others' feelings and will always lend a helping hand. Malia has wonderful academic strengths in terms of language arts. She's an avid reader and a strong interest in literature. She has fluid writing style and is able to express herself well. She always is willing to ask for help when she needs it and is a great help to other students. Malia is very organized. She always comes to class prepared and knows where all of her materials are. Her virtual language arts folder is organized, and her work is very easy to follow. She's a wonderful student. We're so proud of you both. And I'd like to announce Dr. Trevor Ellis, the principal of the middle school, next.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, viewing audience, Superintendent Dr. James Thompson, our Board and our viewing audience. I'm very, very excited to share our information and bio-information on our two students tonight. Our first student that we'll acknowledge will be Kamari Jamal Owens, sorry. It is a pleasure for us to highlight Kamari Owens because he is a true example of citizenship and scholarship. Kamari's excellent work habits and dedication to learning have helped him grow to grow as a learner during this difficult year. Kamari achieved the Principal's Award for the highest GPA in his grade and has achieved a high honor roll each quarter. In a year of adjusting to online learning, schedule changes, and our health crisis, Kamari has excelled as a fully remote learner and has exemplified flexibility and responsibility in all aspects of school life. Kamari is an inquisitive, engaging young man whose many positive attributes has earned him this award. Congratulations, Kamari. Our second recipient is Zariah Harrison. Zariah Harrison is an outstanding student who has consistently achieved one of the highest grade point averages in the school each market period since she began middle school. Through her hard work and determination, Zariah has overcome both personal and remote learning challenges to perform at a near-perfect academic level with a GPA of a 4.31. Before COVID, Zariah engaged in extracurricular activities throughout seventh grade, performing with the school corps, playing on both the soccer and basketball teams, and winning an award for excellence in visual arts. In addition to her contributions as a student, athlete, and artist, Zariah has been an asset to our school community as a citizen as well. Zariah is well-respected by her peers, leads by example, always willing to help others, and showing kindness and compassion for all. Congratulations, Zariah. At this time, I would like to introduce the Principal of Global Experience Magnet, Mr. Jeff Bernabi.
Good evening, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Harris, Board members, and our viewing audience. It is a great pleasure to introduce our first recipient here, Mr. Sam Zabik. Sam is a new student to GEMS this year and has quickly made a strong impression on staff and his peers. Sam is a leader who always asks questions and seeks out help from his teachers when needed. Many of his teachers note that Sam always has a positive attitude, is ready to learn, and seeks out ways to extend his knowledge. As a distance learner, Sam can always be counted on to answer questions and fully participate in class. Outside of school, Sam is active in youth sports, playing soccer for the Suffield Soccer Club and wrestling for summer's youth wrestling. Congratulations, Sam. Our next recipient is seventh grader Sophie Altamorano. Sophie is in her second year with us at GEMS. Her teachers report that she is an excellent writer, a hard worker, and an active participant in class, so it's not surprising to hear that she is an A student. She is also active outside of school, having done gymnastics for six years, and she has just started playing soccer again. This summer, she's excited to be a leader in training for a local camp with the goal of being a trained counselor after her ninth-grade year. Congratulations, Sophie.
Lisa, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
If we can advance to the next slide, please. Excellent. Thank you. The next recipient for GEMS is ninth grader Sharika Lewis-Jones. Sharika is an exemplary student who embodies all of our GEMS principles. Where a lot of students struggled with distance learning, Sharika excelled in all areas. She consistently puts forth her best effort in every aspect of her academic journey, and she does so with compassion and heart. Sharika tutors other students, she runs track in her hometown, and she teaches a Sunday school class at her church. Sharika also volunteers her time at a rehabilitation center, her local library, and a local homeless shelter. Sharika shows incredible maturity, care, and passion in all of her ventures. Congratulations, Sharika.
Thank you.
The last recipient from GEMS is twelfth grader Jacob Vitoraj. Jake transferred to GEMS in his junior year, and we could not feel more lucky that he became a GEMS student. Jake's teachers described the energy that he brings to the classroom as positive and uplifting. And they also note that he is a strong self-advocate, well-organized, respectful, and responsible. Outside of the classroom, Jake serves as a mentor for our middle school students who look up to him as a positive role model. Jake has been selected to serve as a student speaker at our graduation and has plans to enroll in the social work program at Manchester Community College to further his passion for working with youth. We are so proud of all that Jake has accomplished and that he will accomplish. Congratulations, Jake.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bernabi. Like, I really appreciate this award and for the whole district of Bloomfield. I'm really happy that I came to GEMS. This is my third high school, but I feel like I hit it out with a bang. And Mr. Bernabi knows that. I know he knows that. Yeah.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I got my whole family with us.
I'll be taking a seat. Just kidding.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the Principal of Bloomfield High School, Mr. Dan Malletti.
Thank you, Mr. Bernabi. Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Harris, Board members, and our viewing audience, and all the students being honored tonight. First student that we would like to honor is Zachary Blackwood. Zachary Blackwood has been on a phenomenal path since he's arrived at Bloomfield High School. Zachary has set the bar high for himself by continuously obtaining high honors his entire freshman year. Zachary has left an impression on his teachers stating that he's a hard worker, participates, is focused, and has excellent work habits, and he's improving each year as it continues. I believe this scholar has just begun his endeavors of achievement. Bloomfield High School has benefited from his leadership and dedication to learning under any circumstances. Congratulations, Zachary.
Thank you.
Our next recipient is Raven Spears. Raven is an extremely mature and driven student. She's achieved high honor roll for the past two years, all while volunteering for Unified Sports and serving as a member of the Bloomfield's cross-country and track teams. Raven has also done an internship for Capital Workforce. She always looks for opportunities for further growth and new learning. Teachers report that she's dependable and self-motivated, and Raven has a very bright future ahead of her. Congratulations, Raven.
Thank you.
Our third recipient is Condaliza Coleman. Condaliza is preoccupied with the love of learning and has consistently maintained honor roll status every marking period. Condaliza is a goal-oriented young woman who sets definite goals for herself, and she's very enthusiastic about her efforts to attain them. Condaliza is committed to every task that she undertakes. She has participated in numerous extracurricular activities, including ACE mentoring, student council, and athletics. Bloomfield High School has indeed benefited from her quiet leadership style. Condaliza's creativity and artistic ability will serve her well in her future career as an architect. Congratulations, Condaliza.
Thank you.
And our final recipient of the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Awards of Excellence is Senior Jemaya Lindo. And she exemplifies maturity, strong character, and dedication to academic achievement. She has consistently challenged herself by taking the most rigorous classes available and has excelled, earning the distinction of Bloomfield High School's valedictorian of the Class of 2021. During her time at Bloomfield High School, Maya has participated in varsity soccer, both indoor and outdoor track, demonstrating leadership in her role as a captain in each sport. She has been a part of five Class S championship teams. With her thirst for knowledge, quest for excellence, and desire to help others, there is no limit to what she will achieve as she begins her studies in Allied Health Sciences at the University of Connecticut next year. Congratulations, Jemaya.
Thank you.
I want to conclude to thank you and congratulations to our award recipients and their families. We share in the pride of your accomplishments. I think these talented students deserve a round of applause for their achievements and commitments in learning. Let's give them a round of applause, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And on behalf of the, well, I don't want to speak on behalf of the full board. Anybody on the board want to speak on their own behalf?
Congratulations to all the students. This is a good time of the year. Real good time of the year. I wish you all the best.
I'm gonna echo-
Congratulations to everyone.
Go ahead.
Congratulations, my friends. Wish we were there to shake each one of your hands. And this is my favorite Board meeting where we get to say congratulations and hear all the wonderful things our students are doing. So congratulations to you, and we wish you, those of you graduating, a great time. I hear you, Con. And then those of you for next year, have a great summer, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
And I'm gonna echo everybody's comments. I was fortunate to be a guest at the High School Academic Awards Presentation last night. So I saw some of these students in person and heard of the accolades, the well-deserved accolades that they have received. So I echo everybody's comments that this is the favorite time of the year where we get a chance to see our students and all the good things that they are doing and have accomplished. Congratulations to all. Okay, yes, indeedy. Yes, indeedy. I wish, I wish, like Mr. Fryman said, I wish we could shake your hand.
Yeah.
Coming next year. Coming next year. Okay, Student Representative Report from Global Experience Magnet School. There's two students, Lucina Dupuy and Josh Spencer will be giving us the presentation. Please proceed.
Good evening to the Board of Education and community members. Before we get started tonight, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Global Experience Magnet School.
We hope you enjoy the presentation we've prepared for you today about all of our Quarter Four happenings here at GEMS. Next slide, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Spencer. I'm from Bloomfield, Connecticut, and I'm a ninth grader attending GEMS. Being a distance learner has been difficult at times this year, but over the time, I have adapted to it, and I am proud of my progress. Next slide, please.
Hello, my name is Lucina Dupuy. I am from Bloomfield, Connecticut, and I'm a senior here at GEMS. Being an in-person learner, I had to stay physically involved with my work, or I wouldn't have been able to graduate. But I worked hard, and I'm almost at the finish line. Next slide, please.
Recently, we have switched to five days of in-person learning a week. This gives us more time to engage with our teachers and enhance our learning opportunities. This helps our distance learners as well as our in-person learners, because distance learners also now get an extra day of instruction time with their teachers. Experiencing both distance and in-person learning, I could personally relate with this and say that the extra time of virtual instruction is very helpful. Previously, each grade had their own mass break time, but we have now built in a middle school mass break time and a high school mass break time into our schedule, which helps things be more consistent and structured during our day. Next slide, please.
Our clubs here at GEMS are doing a lot of awesome things. The NHS did a Spirit Week in the last week of May. The Yearbook Club has completed the yearbook and are selling copies right now. The Gender Sexuality Alliance is celebrating Pride Month by placing flyers on the wall with information about LGBTQ+ issues and creating a Pride Month bulletin board. The Drama Club is wrapping up a docu-drama that will be released by the end of the school year. And the Golf Club is practicing for a few upcoming matches. We are all very proud of our club's accomplishments during the challenging year. It allowed us to stay even more connected as a school community despite the pandemic. Next slide, please.
GEMS students completed their exhibitions on June 4th. The focus of our exhibitions is knowing, caring, and doing, where students elaborate on their personal definition of knowing, caring, and doing, and how they showcase these abilities throughout the year. Exhibitions allow students to reflect on their progress and give a personal insight on how to advance further in the future. Students are also approved of what they did well in their presentation, as well given constructive criticism in order to ensure the success of their next presentation. Next slide, please.
For Mental Health Awareness Month, the theme was "You Are Not Alone." Here at GEMS, we did our part in stopping the stigma in several ways. One way we have shown our support is by providing students and staff with mental health statistics and facts announcements. We also created a "Give what you can, take what you need" board, where students would write inspiring messages on a sticky note and place them on the board. Then someone in need of such a message could pick one up to brighten up their day. Finally, students and staff were green on Friday, May 7th, to promote awareness. During lunch on this day, we were also given green stress ribbons by our school counselors. Mental health struggles have been enhanced because of the pandemic, so we were happy to play our own small part in helping stop the stigma around mental illness. Next slide, please.
Spirit Week is a week within our school year specifically dedicated to different attire being worn instead of our normal uniforms. As shown here, students and staff were able to show off their swagger and goofiness this year through many different themes such as Pyjama Day, Twin/Squad Day, Teacher vs. Student Day, Throwback Thursday, and Meme Day. However, it is worth noting that because of the pandemic, students were exempted from school uniforms this year, so decking out in style is not necessarily new for the students. Still, these themes help the GEMS family dress together in a collective manner to invoke togetherness and unity within our community. Next slide, please.
Teacher Appreciation Week took place during the week of May 3rd to May 7th. Students were encouraged to go on a Google form and to submit heartfelt messages about their favorite teachers. This let our teachers know that even though COVID has caused us to be a challenging and stressful year, their hard work did not go unnoticed. Our dean of students also complied many of these messages, along with messages staff submitted for each other, into nice gifts for teachers. Next slide, please.
GEMS Olympics changed the normal academic atmosphere of the school year and invited good old competitiveness in our GEMS community. There were many activities to enjoy and to be entertained by, and it gave students a glimpse of summer vacation. The pandemic has significantly shifted the normal occurrences this year, especially for our distance learners, but they were still included into the virtual GEMS Olympics, which was full of many activities and challenges for our distance students, such as art challenges, minute-to-win challenges, academic challenges, athletic challenges, athletic challenges, and fitness challenges. Our in-person students took part in handball, kickball, and volleyball games with the students in their grade, and we wrapped up the day with some staff versus student games, such as kickball and cornhole. Next slide, please.
Our senior prom was held at Wickham Park in Manchester on May 22nd. COVID guidelines made it so we weren't able to have a traditional prom, but we still made it work and had a great time. The majority of our senior class attended, and we had a nice dinner before dancing to the distance and enjoying music from our DJ. While it was unfortunate we couldn't have a more traditional prom, we still did what we can to make it a fun event for everyone involved. Next slide, please.
Unfortunately, COVID-19 has made it difficult to make any trips this year. However, our high school students were lucky enough to take our first college trips in over a year. Students visited Central Connecticut State University and the University of Connecticut on June 2nd, 2021. The trip to Central Connecticut State University was self-guided, while the trip to the University of Connecticut was a guided tour with admissions representatives present. Although these colleges have completed this semester and there were no students on campus, it still gave our GEMS students the opportunity to experience what it's like being on a college campus. Next slide, please.
Our seniors who are college-bound in the fall parts of Quarter Four applying for scholarships. Here at GEMS, we have had our own scholarships. We will be giving out to seniors at our promotion and award ceremony. The GEMS Book Scholarship and the Hakeem Messiah Memorial Scholarship. Students who have also been applying to other scholarships from local, state, and federal agencies, such as the Women in Trade Scholarship, the Addiction and Mental Health Scholarship, and the Navigator Future Scholarship. These scholarships are important in helping students afford a higher education, take some of the financial shit off their shoulders, and recognize the hard work they've done until this point. Next slide, please.
We are happy to announce that despite the struggles caused by the pandemic, GEMS will still be holding some end-of-the-year ceremonies to celebrate our students. Firstly, we held award ceremonies during the school day today for all grades. Here, teachers gave awards to students who showed passion and dedication to their subjects. We also gave our scholarships to graduating seniors. Then our eighth-grade promotion will be taking place on June 16th in our building cafeteria for students and staff to enjoy. The ceremony will be livestreamed online for parents, guardians, and family members to view. Our eighth-grade promotion ceremony is a great opportunity to celebrate our rising high schoolers and acknowledge their hard work. Finally, the senior graduation will be taking place on June 17th at the Bloomfield High School Courtyard. Here, we will be celebrating this great milestone and accomplishments for our seniors as they move on to greater heights. Next slide, please.
Here at GEMS, we've had a roller coaster over here. We've definitely had our ups and downs, but despite that, we are closing up the year strong, and I know that I will be leaving GEMS with the values that remain still in me since sixth grade.
Here at GEMS, we have tried to make the scooter as normal as possible, but still ensure safety for our students and staff. Although this year was tremendously different compared to the others, the GEMS community has still managed to keep our collectiveness throughout the year and still give regard to our principles. Be respectful, be responsible, be safe, and to be our best. Thank you to the Board of Education for your time, and we'd be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that comprehensive report. Board members, you have questions?
Yeah, how was that prom? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. I-
How was that prom? That's quite unique at Wickham Park. How was that? Can you bring that picture back up? It went real quick. How everybody was dressed up real nice? That's outstanding. Who'd have thought? Congratulations. You guys did a very good job. You're a ninth-grade young man. Oh, yes, sir. And you're a senior. You guys are outstanding. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Bolton.
There were two things I just wanted to comment. First of all, Lucina, you have a very, I love your voice.
Voice, yes.
You're either a singer, or you have a future in media. I mean, you sound beautiful. And also, I love that voice. And also, I love that word and that concept of give what you can and take what you need. I love that. I think I'm gonna have to share it with some of the schools I'm working with. Thank you for sharing today.
Thank you.
Just wanna thank you both for that report. It was great. Joshua, I love the jacket and tie. Look very dapper. And yes, Lucina, your voice. I was gonna say the same thing. It is a beautiful voice. I'm actually really happy to hear that you all were embracing mental health awareness. We know our students are not exempt from, you know, mental health issues, especially now, you know, everything is so crazy and different now. So I'm really glad that you all kind of embrace that and people were open to, you know, taking part in these types of activities. So thank you all for the report again.
Other comments? Other comments? From my standpoint, I just wanna say, great job, students. Also, congratulations to Mr. Bernabi and the entire staff for keeping things as regular as could be at the school in spite of this pandemic. I have a grandson who did attend that prom in Wickham Park. And he said it was a ball. They had a good, great time. They were socially distanced. Tables were there and food was brought in from somewhere. And they danced and had a good time. It was in the afternoon, which is not the usual prom times, but they had to do it where there was still light out. So, but great job. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, it's now a part of our, the time for a public PTO comment. Do I have anybody that would like to speak? Anyone who would like to speak? Going once? Going twice?
Hey, I would just like to thank like all my global people, my global faculties, and my GEMS family and all my brothers and sisters.
Would you identify yourself, please?
I am Jacob Putaroz. I go to GEMS. I'm a senior.
Very good. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, I just wanna say like, thank you for like everything and like, no, actually, I wanna think about life. Like as of right now, like I just wanna think the men above us and like how life is turning out. I just like, I just feel like everything is just coming out together and I feel like everything's a blessing. And I just wanna thank you all you guys.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you. Anybody else? What a wonderful way to end up. Thank you for that comment. Super Tenor's Report, Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The report I'm going to share with you today will be presented in the context of the unprecedented challenges we've experienced as a school district and communities this year. These challenges, as we all know, were twofold. An educational landscape radically altered by the COVID-19 and the explosive social unrest related to systemic racism, both locally and nationally. Despite these challenges, our school district, through the stellar, steadfast work of leadership team, staff members, and Board of Education, continue to promote high expectations for adults and students. In addition, our focus on excellence remains fully intact, which has resulted in considerable innovation and refinement as we responded throughout the school year to these extraordinary circumstances. Promising efforts notwithstanding, we are still mindful of the fact that, as in most school districts, we also have students who have been disproportionately harmed by the impact of the pandemic on their social, emotional, and academic well-being. Our 2021 through 2024 Plan of Excellence include the commitment to address the needs of such students as one of our highest priorities. The good work noted above is no small part due to the support we have received from students and families, well-established community partners, colleges and universities, town officials, and the citizen of Bloomfield. I'm deeply grateful to all of you for your unwavering assistance during these difficult times. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any comments? Questions? Yes, Lynette?
Not a question, just a comment. Just happy to hear that, you know, Bloomfield has been kind of leading the charge for the diversity and equity efforts for, you know, a few years now before it even really became, you know, the in-fashion thing to do within the state, right? So, you know, kudos to your team, Dr. Thompson, and whoever, you know, led the charge there. We are just, you know, happy that we were able to be leaders in this piece of education. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for acknowledging that. You know, our district has gotten to receive regional and national recognition, but also international. We had the opportunity to present over a month ago in an international conference about the efforts that are taking place here in Bloomfield. So, we're proud of the work, but we recognize that we have a lot more in front of us.
Thank you. Okay, the financial report for May. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Good evening to all. This report is as of June 8th, 2021. The one-page summary report, as you can see, shows a balance of approximately $970,000 or 2.15% of the adopted budget that has yet to be expended or encumbered. As you can see on the summary page, all of the major accounts are showing balances except for major account 08, tuition, which has a deficit of $29,852 at this time. Also, at this time of the fiscal year, there are several sub-accounts showing deficit amounts. These include, on page one of the six-page report, account number 1110, salaries for teachers, shows a deficit of $102,660. Account 1210, salaries for professional staff, shows a deficit of $9,052. And account 1240, salaries for clerical, has a deficit of $20,600. These three accounts on page one have been over-expended and show us being over-expended at this time because the special ed tuition receivable for the months of May and June have yet to be booked. And once they are booked, those deficits will show a balance. On page two of the six-page report, account 1265, salaries for maintenance, has a deficit of $40,799. This account was over-expended because the previous facilities director was kept on after his retirement date to help train the new facilities director, Kenny Wallach. Also on that page, account 1280, salary support, was over-expended because we had to hire a long-term substitute instructional assistant at Meta, and that's showing a balance, a deficit of $3,152. And then finally, on that page, account 2200, Social Security, has been over-expended by $14,755 at this time because we haven't received reimbursement from the extension program. Once we receive that reimbursement, that will become a balance. On page four of the six-page report, the two sub-accounts regarding tuition, 5630 and tuition 5690, continue to show deficits of $45,075 and $181,655 respectively. As we have reported over the past several months, these deficits are, one, the result of students moving into the district requiring services in out-of-district facilities, and two, the result of 37 additional students enrolling in magnet schools that were not budgeted at the beginning of the school year. Mr. Harris, that completes my report on the financials. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Anyone?
Chairman Harris, this is not about the financials. It's semi here. But I see Dr. Thompson is still in the room. So, I'd really just like to express my appreciation to him for managing the pandemic here in the way that he has done. He and his team did a stellar job, quite exemplary, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments on the financials? Okay.
I'm sorry, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Guzman, when you mentioned the deficit under the Social Security line item, I missed what you said about that. You said we weren't reimbursed for what?
We, it's from the extension program that we sponsor. There's some reimbursements that come back to the budget from that program. It's the extension program.
How does that fall under Social Security?
Well, for all the programs we have, whether they're grant-funded or whatever, there's certain contribution that goes to Social Security for folks that get paid. So, there's a certain amount that is attributed to the Social Security contribution.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, Mr. Guzman? You asked if you would like to make a statement?
Yes, thank you very much.
Can you speak up a little bit? Your voice is fading out on us.
How's this?
That's better.
Thank you. It is with great pleasure that I announce that the members of the Bloomfield Administrators Association have chosen Mrs. Wendy Banishepard as the Bloomfield Administrator of the Year. The Association recognizes her dedication through the year in keeping the students, families, and staff informed about COVID-19. She has constantly apprised all of the various announcements from the CDC, the World Health Organization, and the State Department of Health. She has forged partnerships with the Bloomfield West Hartford Health District and the Hartford Health Clinic to provide vaccinations for all district staff and students. Dr. Thompson and members of the staff congratulate Wendy and thank her for her tireless efforts throughout this past year. So, on that regard, I just wanted to take a brief moment to inform the Board of Education of that that recognition that the Bloomfield Administrators Association had bestowed on Wendy. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for letting us know that. I more than happily endorse that. You know, as Mrs. Bolton clearly knows, the job of Director of Pupil Services is two jobs into one, anyway. And then to take on the whole COVID reporting system, she has just done a fabulous job all year. So, couldn't go to a more deserving person.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Harris. Thank you, Mr. Guzman. I just wanted to take a moment, though, because of course, this is, I don't feel this as an extension of just myself as much as it is the entire Bloomfield community. The year is presented for the challenge of our lifetimes, many of us, both personally and professionally. And at times, it felt like trying to build a house in the middle of an earthquake, but the efforts are no less than heroic for this entire-
You lost your one.
We lost you, Wendy.
She's frozen.
Yep, she froze. Yeah. Okay.
Building leaders and, of course, our brave, persevering students and families.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. And certainly, our entire community. This is one Bloomfield, and we couldn't have done it without each other.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Again, award well deserved. Moving on to old business. Depending on which copy of the agenda you got, I know these two items have been interchanged, so I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege and I'm gonna go ahead with the proposal of the revised 2021-2022 calendar. Mr. Guzman?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Yes, on October, in January 12th of this year, the Board adopted the school calendar for the upcoming 21-22 school year. At this time, we are asking the Board to consider and approve a revision to the 21-22 school calendar. The differences between the two calendars are very quickly. One, the start date for the, would now be Thursday, September 2nd, and not Wednesday, September 1st. The teachers' contractual six days of professional development are now scheduled for August 30, August 31, September 1, October 6, November 2nd, and February 2nd. Contractually, they are entitled to six days of professional development. Thirdly, the parent-teacher conferences are now scheduled for December 1, 3, and 15, and March 2, 9, and 16. They're all Wednesdays. Previously, those were scheduled for those two months, but they were all sequential, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Now, they all fall on Wednesdays. And finally, number four, other than the last day of school, which traditionally has been scheduled as an early release day, this calendar now has eight scheduled early release days, dismissal days that fall on the first and third Wednesdays of specific months. The reason for this is, as was reviewed by Dr. Thompson at earlier meetings regarding the SRTI funding, the district is now purchasing new core programs in both math and English language arts for grades pre-K to 8. The district has purchased open court reading for grades K through 5, the bridge math program for grades pre-K through 5, and will be piloting a middle math program for grades 6 through 8. The additional day prior to the beginning of school will facilitate the professional development for teachers involved in these new programs. The district wants to assure that the teachers are supported and will have familiar and become familiar with the materials prior to opening. In addition, there are days needed to implement the Eye Ready Assessment Program. The half-day of September 15th and the full day of professional development set for October 6th will be teacher training for this particular program. The remaining early release days on the schedule will be set aside to continue professional development meetings, data team meetings, and grade-level meetings and so forth. Some days will be used for professional development with respect to the DataWise project with Harvard University and for implementation of the Equal Opportunity Schools, which seeks to ensure students' equal access to challenging high school programs. The rationale for this recommended calendar is to ensure that the SRTI grants and the programs associated with that SRTI grant application can be fulfilled in terms of all the professional development that's gonna be required to ensure fidelity with those initiatives. The administration recommends approval- The administration recommends approval of this revised calendar. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Mrs. Bolton?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the revised twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two academic calendar as presented.
Second?
Been properly moved a second. Any questions?
I'm muted. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just wondering, um, why the past, I think it was past couple of years, we moved from starting school in August to starting uh in September?
Yes, uh, this past year, um, uh, I don't know if you recall, the State Department of Education, I think the State Board of Education permitted uh the district to have, prior to the start of school year, three additional days for um teacher training and teacher preparation for the beginning of this um, this school year. And the reason for that and what they did, they also passed a resolution for this concurrent year that we did not have to have one hundred and eighty school days. We would have one hundred and seventy-seven. Those, the difference of those three days were to be used at the beginning of the school year prior to opening. That was all legislated by the State Board of Education. So as a result of that, we started this school year on the day after Labor Day. In this particular case, in order to um provide some training, prior to school opening, we've uh met with the Teachers Union to see if, in, in addition to the first two days of October thirty and thirty-one, that we could also have September one as an in-service day for um, for preparation, if you will. So the first day's been, the first day of school's been pushed back one day. It's still before Labor Day. And coincidentally, the last day of school in both calendars is still Tuesday, June fourteenth, so that hasn't changed. But that's uh, that's the history in, in terms of this current year that we uh, that we're in. A lot of action by the State Department of Education, the State Board of Education in allowing and seeing the, the uh, the rationale for prior to the year, making sure that teachers were prepared for this extraordinary school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to caution, uh, the municipal election is this year, um, November second, but there could be, depending on the party endorsements, it could be a primary. And I believe it's Tuesday, September fourteenth, so I just want to put that on the record. If I'm, if I'm mis- if I'm mistaken, but that's, I think it's September fourteenth.
Mr. Ike, we were very aware of that possibility. And any of that, that the decision will be made to have a primary at that time, we can always transition to remote learning, so we'll not disrupt the calendar.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. You, you're the man. You're on top of everything.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of uh the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is so ordered. Okay, I have to apologize because uh currently I got the third or fourth agenda. So I missed an item. So I'm gonna go back. Um, summer programs at Bloomfield High School and Global Experience Magnet School, Mr. Maletti and Mr. Benabi.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, uh, for giving us the opportunity to discuss the summer programs this year. Um, I'll begin by first just letting everyone know that um we're moving to, Bloomfield High School will be moving to a traditional uh summer school program. Uh, as you may or may not know, our pair, our students in the past have paid, have had to pay upwards of seven hundred dollars to attend West Hartford Schools for either credit recovery or acceleration. Um, we're happy to announce that this year we will be, for our nine through eleven, offering uh ten different courses for our students to either rec- recover credits or to accelerate and get ahead. Those include Algebra One, Algebra Two, Probability and Statistics, English Nine, English Ten, U.S. History, Integrated Science, Biology, Spanish, and Physical Education. This will run, the program will run from s- uh July sixth through the thirtieth and will be it from seven-thirty in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon in order to be able to offer the one-point-zero credits for our students. Currently to this, at this moment, we have had one hundred and one students register for uh a traditional summer school, which we're very excited about. In addition, we will continue what we've had in the past with our Summer Academy, but it is what we call um our bridge program, because that's what we consider it. It's the bridge between the middle school and the high school for our current eighth graders, who will be our rising ninth graders. They'll be in person at Bloomfield High School. The credit recovery and acceleration will be fully remote, so our freshmen will have the building to themselves to get acclimated to the school, um, learn where things are, transition through the hallways, introduce, get introduced to the leadership team, um, to have the building for the, to themselves from June sixth to the twenty-third, from seven-thirty to twelve o'clock. They will earn a half a credit of an elective, which will focus on English, math, science, and financial literacy. Mr. White and Dr. Mackey done an outstanding job putting together a program, a thematic curriculum with experiential component that's focused on a topic of social activism. Um, some of the topics that'll be discussed, um, if, for example, in math, students will learn statistics on gentrification, credit score and crime, science, they'll learn about global warming and renewable energy, English, criminal justice reform, anti-racist theory, and financial literacy, poverty and hunger, and entrepreneurship. Just some of the things that our students uh will be learning throughout the summer. We also be partnering with the University of Hartford to expose our students to many of them topics. And we promise that this is going to be a very relevant and responsive experience. Because at the close of the program, each and every student will have created a presentation that showcases their understanding of literacy, numeracy, science, and finance as they relate to social activism. That uh concludes my report on Bloomfield High School's uh summer school and summer academy. I will turn it over to Principal of Gems, Mr. Jeff Benapi.
Thank you, Mr. Maletti. Uh, Gems High School students will be supported uh this summer with credit recovery opportunities. Uh, the program is very similar to the program that we at Gems used last year, uh, when last year we had, uh, you know, students recover about twenty-six credit in the, in about twenty-six different high school classes. Um, at this current, at this time, we're currently anticipating that about twenty-seven uh Gem students are in danger of losing credit um in one or more classes. Now, what these students will be doing is they'll receive an incomplete for the year, which in uh essence extends the deadlines for the school year. Um, students will have essentially five extra weeks in the school year during which time students will receive support from certified teachers. Um, we have a number of certified teachers who have volunteered to help out with this. We have uh teachers that are certified both in E L A, math, science, social studies. Pretty much the only content area that we're missing is world language, so uh we do think this is gonna be a comprehensive program. Um, working with teachers, um, and all this work will be done remotely. Students will have an opportunity to redo work if it was not done to a passing standard. Or actually, even if it was done to a passing standard, but they want to improve that grade, uh, they can do that and they'll, they'll uh essentially be able to recalculate uh the grade based on that improved work. Students will also have um support from teachers um to complete assignments that were not turned in, so um, a lot of remote support here just to help students uh in what were, is essentially an extended school year for them. Funding for the Gems program was provided through a grant um from the state of Connecticut and the Regional School Choice Office. Uh, we anticipate that this work may take up to about a hundred and eighty staff hours um at a cost of about seventy-five hundred dollars. And again, that's uh supported through a generous grant from the Regional School Choice Office, so um, that's a, just a quick overview of, of how we'll be supporting high school students in Gems and subject to your questions, uh, that concludes my uh, my briefing.
Thank you both. Uh, questions from the board? Board questions? I know they were comprehensive.
I don't have a question, just a comment. I just, I'm very happy to hear that there is a transitional program for the students moving from middle school to high school without the intimidation of having other students and, and kids in the building. They can come and relax and not have to try to be cool. So yeah, thank you so much for creating and designing that. And I, I'm just very happy that our students don't have to pay that amount of money in West Hartford for the quality program that we're providing. Thank you so much, both of you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. And the last, uh, well, it's almost the last item on the agenda. Portrait of a Graduate update. Ms. Cullen and then Mr. Tittlebaum.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, Mr. Harris, Board of Education and our listening and viewing audience. Mr. Tittlebaum and I are excited tonight to be sharing with you the Portrait of a Graduate website and the video. I want to thank um Dr. Thompson, the Portrait of a Graduate design team, the Cabinet, and the community for their support and hard work in bringing this project to you this evening. Our website shares the journey. It describes the process, the who, the what, and how we did it. It also gives the answers to our questions and the competencies that were de- that were deemed most important for our students to be successful. At the conclusion of the website, we will be showing our video. Our video takes a look at what our community, students, parents, and staff say about making our Bloomfield graduates ready for the twenty-first century. As you view this video, you will see our incredible students and all of the participants who took time to be part of the film and really put our Portrait of a Graduate on the map. Please enjoy it and um Jason will start the website for us.
Bloomfield, Connecticut Public Schools presents Bloomfield's Portrait of a Graduate. To create our Portrait of a Graduate, we at Bloomfield Public Schools in Connecticut work together with our community, families, and students to discuss and define the key values, knowledge skills, and work habits our students will need to thrive after graduation. Our conversations were guided by three key questions. Key question number one, what hopes, dreams, and aspirations do we in Bloomfield have for our young people?
I want my children to excel in all levels of their educational journey. By being exposed to innovative thinking, we are raising leaders and future trailblazers.
I would like to see our young people engaged in community development, both at the civic level and at the economic level, and help develop a society that is inviting and fair to all.
I want to have all the necessary skills to be successful in life. I want to make my family proud and most importantly, make myself proud.
Key question number two, what are the skills and habits of mind that our children need for success in this rapidly changing world?
Our children will be compassionate, think creatively and critically, and be personally and socially responsible.
A sense of security within themselves of who they are and what they can do. The understanding that in order to succeed, you must present the best of yourself as often as possible in all ways.
The skills that I need to be able to fulfill my dreams include a positive attitude, strong motivation, and a focused mindset.
Key question number three, what are the implications for the learning experiences we provide in our school systems?
School is the major influence that can help shape our students. It provides a community with in-person social interaction, which is critical in a world of global social media. Developing strong, positive habits and behaviors early help pave the way for a rewarding future.
The learning experience in high school must be relevant and provide opportunities for experiential learning. Students do best when able to apply knowledge learned with support and encouragement.
One of the most useful learning experiences I could say is during math class, our math teacher, she usually connects everything that we do in real life to what we do in class.
Collectively, we all want local graduates to be strong of mind, heart, and spirit, skilled for the real world, and ready to engage with others to make positive change. Bloomfield Public School students, families, and community members work together to identify four focus areas to make this a reality. The first area of focus, become a critical thinker.
I want to become a critical thinker. I want to understand the bigger picture and help solve unresolved problems. I want to apply clear, rational, open-minded thinking informed by evidence.
Focus area two, be a communicator.
I am a communicator because I am able to relay thoughts and ideas well. I listen effectively and use communication to inform, instruct, motivate, and persuade.
Focus area three, be a problem solver.
I am a problem solver. I am able to implement and reflect critically on a solution. I also evaluate and prioritize solutions to difficult or complex situations.
Focus area four, be adaptable.
I am adaptable. I demonstrate flexibility. I want to respond productively, negotiate well, and balance diverse views.
With these four areas as our guideposts, we're confident the future of our Bloomfield graduates, families, and business community will continue to bloom and grow in ways that we've only just begun to imagine.
Bloomfield is a school district with clear aspirations for excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. We aspire to provide the ideal learning experiences needed for our students to prosper in a twenty-first-century global economy. This Portrait of a Graduate work moves us closer to achieving that goal.
On behalf of Bloomfield Public Schools, we would like to thank you for your continued support in developing these core skills that will paint the portrait of our Bloomfield graduates.
And please, continue to visit our graduate in Bloom website, where you can share your feedback and put our portrait into action for the young people of Bloomfield.
For more information, please visit graduateinbloom.com.
Jason, you, Jason, he, you want to do the website, please? We're doing it in the wrong order, but it's okay.
So, yeah, so here, so here's our website, um, that has been put together. Um, so with the website, um, we have our welcome page, then we do have a quote regarding education, where education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and the world better than you found it. Um, and then the rest of this um website, which is available, um, that everyone can get to, as the video had suggested. Um, and you can actually go through and see a letter from Dr. Thompson, um, see our vision and our mission, the timelines and the steps that we've taken throughout this process. Um, see our design team, the community forums, and the process that we've taken and how we've involved our community in these processes. Um, and then looking at the data that we got back from the questions from all of our different stakeholders, from our families, our certified staff, our non-certified staff, our community members, and our students. And then we have our top competencies, as was outlined in the video, which all adds up to our final Portrait of a Graduate.
So as you can see, um, our Portrait of a Graduate website will be continually um growing and changing. This is just the beginning of our work. We'll be looking at all of the data that has been um collected. Um, we'll be having it analyzed and work um throughout the summer on um kind of charting a course as to what all of this information from our community has told us um and what we need to look at in our schools, in our community, um with the help of our families and um to really make sure that our um students in Bloomfield are ready for the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
One quick comment. Excellent video. Very proud of everyone who participated in the production. And furthermore, as the general manager of BA TV, I would love if you all shared it so I could broadcast it on our channel. Thank you.
Mr. Fryman, part of the website, the video is embedded on there. So anyone can go to the website, they can see the video as well as all the information that can also get printed out into a brochure.
And at some point, please provide it to me as a YouTube or Google Drive so I can get it on the air.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to commend the district and the superintendent and his team, because I remember hearing this term Portrait of a Graduate, I think it was two years ago at one of the CAPE conventions, and not knowing what that term is, Dr. Thompson has really defined it and flourished it and brought it to life. That was outstanding. That was absolutely outstanding.
Other comments?
Yes, Mr. Harris. I would like, I would like to just say this was totally well done and I certainly, I must admit that in January or whenever we started seeing information about the Portrait of the Graduate and the timeline and the things that we were planning to do, it seemed a bit lofty, but I can just say, Dr. Thompson and your team, Anne Marie and Jason, everything, I'm very happy that you're able to pull it off. I understand that it's a, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress, but what has been completed at this point is commendable. So thank you so much for representing Bloomfield the way you appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anne Marie, from me, just, I'm amazed at the finished product and I'm just so overwhelmed. And what it must took, must, what it must have taken for you all to finally put this together. I know what I had to go through, my taping part of it, and I gave the same message and, and I was asked to do it about 15 different times and each time, okay, two or three more times, and I don't think it changed one iota, but the photographers were such perfectionists that they weren't going to rest until it was done the way they wanted it done. So it was, it was a work, it still is a work in progress, but it was, I'm so happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I have to tell you that the photographers, they were exceptionally professional and they were so impressed with our students. I mean, our students, some of them, like two or three times and they had it. They were excited. And honestly, the kids know a lot more about these YouTube videos and everything, but they were excited and they, they did a great job. Every participant, I mean, we had volunteers wanting, you know, to be filmed. We had students who just walked into the library and said, could I be part of it too? And obviously, we couldn't take them because we have parent permission, et cetera, but it was, it was really a fun couple of days. We had a great time, but thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, CAPE updates. Just to let you know that Bloomfield Board of Education is a recipient of a, let me find it, let me find it, here it is. We are the recipient of the CAPE Board of Distinction Award. This is a program that was created in 1998 to recognize excellence in the leadership activities of local boards. We will be recognized at the CAPE CAPS convention on Friday, November 12th. And at that time, our board will be presented with a plaque and with the date engraved and fact, for us, we are repeat recipients. So it won't be a plaque, it'll be another plate. But additional details will be coming. As far as CAPE is concerned, there is an upcoming leadership conference down at Water's Edge in the end of July. I personally will be attending National School Board Leadership Workshop on CAPE's time in August 12th to the 15th in Louisville. And that may be it for the summer. So, you know, that's kind of it for CAPE update. Board comments, Mr. Ike?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're here in June, who would have thought, beginning of this year, back in September, here we are in June. I would again echo everything, Dr. Thompson and your staff, you guys did a tremendous job with this COVID, keeping everybody informed every day, every day, every day, even on the weekends, I think we got notifications. It just kept coming. You were on top of everything, Dr. Thompson. Yesterday I had the privilege, I attended the award ceremony and the student that was the number three student, she got the Excellence Academic Achievement Award. She had a 4.22. And then the valedictorian and the summitorian, they didn't say, so they had to be higher. They didn't say what their GPA was. UConn is well represented by both high school students and then UConn's a very competitive school to get into. So it was a very good program. We had a very good year. Ms. Banish, you did an outstanding job. You were always on top of it. You, you, you had all the information. You left no questions to be answered. So thank you, Dr. Thompson. I wish you guys the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just congratulations to all the award recipients, the superintendent's award. Congratulations to Wendy and your, your well-deserved honor. Like Mr. Ike said, you know, just thank you so much for all of the great updates that you gave us. Your reports were so robust and it was so helpful to have all of that COVID information about our schools, the students and as well as Bloomfield. So thank you for that. Thank you, Dr. Thompson, for your leadership and all of the hard work that your staff has put into all of these things that we did this year, making it through COVID, all of the diversity efforts, Portrait of a Graduate, everything. I'm just really happy we were able to continue on the work, even though it was a really tough year. And congratulations to my colleagues for our Board of Distinction Award and honor. So great work, everyone. That's all I have to say. Have a great summer. Try to stay cool and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogal, ask a guy.
So let me say again, congratulations to the superintendent for his exemplary leadership. Congratulations to his team and also well-deserved Ms. Banish. Thank you very much, by the way, for your assistance to me personally. And, you know, let's move forward. The Portrait of a Graduate, I cannot wait to see the students begin to roll out through that particular structure. Very impressive. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Superintendent. You did a stellar job, stellar job.
Mr. Moore?
Okay, congratulations to all the award winners. Congratulations to Wendy. And I really, really, like everybody else, would really like to thank Dr. Thompson and his team. I mean, we came through a tough year, but as Bob Ike said, he was there on top of everything. And I don't know how else to say it, but again, thank you, Dr. Thompson and your, and your team. And I look forward to seeing hopefully everybody in September, not on Zoom, but hopefully back, back in the building.
Thank you. Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think our young student from Gems said the correct statement when he said, "I am so proud to celebrate life." When I heard those words, it just, you know, it was like sparkling, yes, celebrate life. What a year for not only for our students, but for our staff, for our superintendent, but thank you all for getting us through this and making those changes that were so necessary to continue on with education in our town of Bloomfield. I'm sure in 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, our Bloomfield students will talk about the year when they went from going to school to going to Zoom. Well, you never know what might happen in 50 years, but they'll have some history to talk about. In the meantime, if anything, hopefully it also made them stronger as they go out into the world and go on to college and go on to various employment. But bottom line, I thank staff, I thank Dr. Thompson, I thank our chairman, Don Harris, for leading us through this last year, and I appreciate all the members of our Board of Education for all their kind of assistance. Thank you. Have a great summer, everyone, and hopefully we'll see you in September, live from the Brooklyn Board of Education Boardroom.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes, okay, I have a few remarks and I would like to begin by first thanking the student representatives from both Gems and Bloomfield High School who presented at our board meetings all this year. I just appreciate the information that was disseminated and just the poise in which all of the students used in presenting information. So thank you for that. I would also like to say congratulations to our graduating seniors who are leaving our district. We know that you will continue to represent Bloomfield well and represent your families wherever and whatever you decide to do. I'd like to thank everyone who made this year possible and hope keep our students and staff safe. A special thanks to Wendy Banish and the many heroes of our district, such as the nurses, the school nurse, school nurses, custodians, bus drivers, you know, those that we don't think about a lot, but I just know that, you know, I think about them and want to thank you. In addition, thank you to all of our district staff, certified and non-certified, for the relentless dedication in these unprecedented times. And Dr. Thompson and Ms. Stacy McCann for coordinating also monthly Harlem Renaissance programs. They have been just phenomenal. I appreciate it. And finally, to our school administrators and certainly I say finally, but certainly not the least, but thank you for being at the helm of every issue in your building. This is not the kind of thing that we learned in school as administrators, how to handle and manage during a pandemic. So you've accomplished tasks and responded to areas that we didn't even know needed attention to. So thank you, administrators. You stepped up and demonstrated remarkable leadership skills in these, in these times. So from, as a board member, I just want to recognize you and thank you, Mr. Harris. That concludes my words for today.
Thank you. Just a reminder to everyone, Bloomfield High School will be graduating their seniors next Wednesday, the 16th, at 12 noon in the courtyard. Gems will be graduating their seniors on next Thursday, the 17th, at 3:00 PM in the high school courtyard. If you want tickets, you need to call the school and secure your tickets because it's going to be very closely passed out so that we are making sure we are keeping people socially distanced and we want to finish up the school year in good form. My thanks to everybody who presented today, to our wonderful student reps and our student reps all year long. You have just done a magnificent job and I can't be more pleased. Also, again, congratulations to Wendy. Wendy, you just, I remember when I first hired you some 20-some years ago at Bloomfield High School as a special ed teacher. And wow, what you have come through now. I mean, it's just, I'm just, I'm just amazed at the, at the work that you have taken on and done it all. Great. It's been a tough year, folks. It's been a tough year, but we have come through it and I think we've come through it well. And, you know, Dr. Thompson and I speak on the phone, sometimes two and three times a day, which may also include weekends. So, you know, our, our respective partners are just probably tired of the, of the both of us, but, you know, it's, it's through his leadership and the leadership of his team that has seen us through this amazing or this devastating pandemic. And we are still out in front and moving forward. The next time we are meeting will be September 14th and, and yes, it's my hope, it's my prayer that we are meeting in person. And so Howard will have the cameras on and, and we will be back at the board, conducting our meetings and moving forward. So again, thank you to all. And at this point, Mr. Ike?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I suck it.
Okay. Good night, all.